But you can see it's flat and that means it's keeping up with the growth in the in the enterprise fund. Now, there's no rule of thumb for the perfect number here. It just depends on the needs of the system. You know, you could talk to your public works team and they could tell you really how much you need. If you've got major repairs and replacements you have to make, they're going to replace that or reserve. This number needs to be high. I don't, I think this is fine financial condition for your enterprise fund. It did go down from seven and a half months last year to five point four this year. But you know, this is going to ebb and flow and move. So, okay, so let's go on to page nine and just take a look at your operations. And this is where I'm just going to give you a word of caution when it comes to this. And you guys probably already know this. This is your gross profit percentage. And this takes your operating income from your enterprise fund divided by your revenue. So what we're doing there is how well is our revenue keeping up with our expenses? You can see it's at nine point seven percent in two thousand and twenty three. What that means is for every dollar that comes in the front door for the enterprise fund, and after you pay those direct expenses, employees, materials, supplies, chemicals, and depreciation charge, you've had nine cents of every dollar or ten almost left over to go elsewhere. And you can see that's downward trending. So usually that means that the revenue is not keeping up with the expenses. And at this point, you know, usually you want to look at maybe a rate study to figure that out. And they really, you know, I see this in a lot of the cities that I audit. When inflation was, you know, eleven or twelve percent, which you had two years. The way that the auditor general calculates it, not CNBC. You know, they, the state calculates it in a different manner. You had two years of back to back eleven percent inflation. So, you know, over six years, the last six years, it turned ten dollars into seven dollars and fifty cents is what the last six years did to local governments. And so you're in an inflationary period when you look at this. And so that's going to be in the cost side. If it's not reflected in an equal manner in the revenue side, you're going to have a downward trend like this. And I want to show you in a little different manner on the next page, on page ten. These are the two components of revenue or your operating profit. I mean, blue is going to be your revenue per resident and your green is going to be your expense per resident. And the gap between them is going to be that profit margin. And you can see how that's been squeezed over the last couple of years. It's getting smaller and smaller and smaller. That's another, that kind of shows it a little closer rather than implying that your expenses aren't keeping up with the revenue. You can kind of see it there. And just on page eleven is going to be, you know, when we're talking on page ten and page nine, we're looking at economic profit, economic, you know, expenses, including noncash appreciation. On, on page eleven, we're just looking at the cash flows of the enterprise fund. And I, I think what's interesting when you look at this, like the blue line is going to be your operational cash flows. Your red line is your debt service. So you can see your debt service is relatively low in the enterprise fund. You don't have a high level of debt in the enterprise fund. It's about four and a half percent of rest. So four cents of every dollar that comes in through your billing goes to pay your debt service. That's it. And if you look in two thousand and twenty three, the purple column is actually positive. This is the first time in a long time, and that's your transfers. Remember, we've talked about this in the past. A normal municipal setup is where the enterprise fund, they name it an enterprise fund for this reason is it both operated a positive cash flow. And then it can then supplement the general fund, which does not cover its own costs typically by user fees. That's kind of the relationship between the two, and you can see that took place this year. So you were able to generate enough cash flow to fund operations, pay that debt service and make the inter fund transfer. And still at the end of the year, three hundred and eighty six thousand dollars of positive cash flow left over. I know that's a lot of numbers, but you know, when you have some time, take a look at this chart. It's all positive for the enterprise fund. You can see, you know, we worried about profitability before. We're worried about covering expenses. And it looks now to be operating more like the standard enterprise fund. With that caveat, we may want to do a rate study because of that leaving profit margin. With that, we'll go to page twelve, and I'm almost done. The page twelve, we've talked about the findings already, so I don't have to go over this in great detail. It's just kind of a chart that shows you the line with the strike due to its prior year that got corrected. Finding ten dash oh five is a continuing finding and no new recommendations or findings this year other than the verbal recommendation I gave you regarding investment of surplus funds. So I, I know I went over that very fast. I always, when I get ready to present a audit report, I always look at like the three, two or three things that really, you know, we focused on, things that we saw as significant this year. And I, I write it down just while I'm going through the preparation process. One of them is construction activity. It finally slowed, which I know it's a bit for the town to get a breather. I know it came in and it just ran them over for years. There was just so much activity, you know, coming through the door, setting up the new customers, doing this developer billing and things like that. But it slowed from about a hundred and forty four homes being added in two thousand and twenty two to forty three in two thousand and twenty three. So had a slowing of the construction activity. That's what we saw at first. And then on the flip side, grant activity, two million dollars is quite a bit for the town in grants. And as I said, the charter school is a separate audit, yet it is just a part of the town. So it's kind of a different situation there and their year end is in June and they have to get their audits out by September. So three month reporting window. These grants are still coming in at the end of September for June's year end. So that's difficult. That was a challenge. And as you see, there was a restatement this year, correction of an error. And then capital assets, you continue to add to your property, your plant and equipment. The governmental activities added two point eight million dollars to your capital assets. The, the largest addition was the HVAC system that contributed one point two million, almost one point three million dollars of that two point eight additions in the governmental side. And on the enterprise side, you had one point eight million in additions. There were some well work and lift station improvements, both of them contributing towards that. So a lot of activity on the, on the capital side. The good part is you have a lot of activity on the capital side, but it's not equating to a lot of activity on the debt side. Like I said, you still have a relatively low level of debt in both the governmental activities and the business type activities. With that, I'll close and take any questions if you have.
So this general fund that you have here, so what would you recommend to keep this kind of balance at this level?
I would, you know, when we talked about this in the past, I always say you don't turn it around overnight. Just you don't, you budget, you end up budgeting a surplus. So if you, during the budgetary process, if you end up with more expenses than revenue and you adhere to your budget, you will end up with this number going down. You know, the only, really the way to fix it is over time, budget a surplus. But you know, like let's say a contingency amount or something that you don't plan on spending, and that will slowly build this up to, you know, it will go higher that way, right?
So this was from last year. Does that two point one number, does that include work that was done? You know, and on like, like for example, that was stopped at two hundred and fifty thousand. Is that included in that two point one?
Yes.
It is. Okay. So that number, that money's there. And then on the enterprise fund, I think your recommendations there seem to be a rate study, which I think we're in the middle of, of doing.
Okay.
On, you know, looking at water rates and, and increasing.
Yeah.
Mayor, we, we did have a rate adjust prior to you take the office.
Okay.
I don't think that's reflected. Okay, then for two thousand and twenty four, correct?
Okay, so that will be next year's.
That's correct.
Okay. Was that based on a new study?
Permit fees.
I'm not over.
Get those up.
Agreed. And we talked about that on, yes. Commissioner Pollan brought a good point about looking at the permit fees and stuff. I know we have to, we need to really seriously look at reevaluating those because I think that would add a lot to that general fund as well.
Now, one thing to remember, are you talking about building permits?
Yeah.
They're restricted. So if there is, if you have building permits, revenue that exceed the money that you incurred to enforce the Florida Building Code. I just worked with another saying this today. That's a restricted amount and it would not fall into this unrestricted bucket. You have to use that for enforcing the Florida Building Code. And not only that, the state has imposed the cap on the amount of unspent building permit fees that you can carry forward. So, and I think they were, they were, they were trying to to stop balancing of the budget or things like that using builder permit fees. The builder lobby is pretty strong.
Do you know, do you know what that is?
Cap.
The cap?
Yeah, it's a four year average of the cost that you've incurred to enforce the building.
Building code.
Okay. And, and that's, there are some caveats and some, in some specifics on that in the statutes. It's five, five, three point eight zero is the statuteary section and it's in there. And you know, they've, they've got some feedback. It's a very bad piece of legislation. I think it invites moral hazard and overspending in the building department. We always joke that the, you know, that the building department building will have, you know, marble floors and they'll all drive the nicest vehicles, you know, around to do the inspections because this encourages spending those, those building permit fees. I have some cities I audit and there's millions of dollars in unspent permit fees. Like a real strong growth area and they've got high permit fees. So it's, it's a difficult issue.
But if you look at these permit fees that you have that are restricted, the town has the right to push that out, to improve those areas. Let's say for example, transportation. If we wanted to come out and pull eighty thousand bucks out to repave a road or something, you could use that for that particular use.
Right. You, you, what are you talking about? Like for the impact fees?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Right. So, so if, all we know that we believe with this, with this study we're looking at is that our permit fees and our impact fees and all that stuff may be a little too
Okay.
Yeah. Low. So, so by doing that, I think then you could have that money to use for improvements to the town roads and streets or drainage or whatever it could.
Yeah, just to clarify, while I'm talking about just as for building permit fee, not the impact.
Right.
So they're just naturally restrictive in your. But yeah, they can be used for, like say you have two million in transportation. Such thing.
The impact fees then, but the permit fees cannot. So what you're saying, that's right.
Okay. Yeah, the code there is to enforce the Florida Building Code. That's, that's the allowing use of the statute. So that's gray area right there. Exactly what, what is, what is that four year average of the cost enforcement.
Correct.
Exactly.
Cap for the permit, not for the impact.
Okay, so the impact, you've just got to make sure that we're at par with the rest of the cities around here. Correct.
And we can use that money to flip into the approach for that.
Correct.
Right.
Commissioner Pollen?
At least you can read the FLC for guidance on it for free. So we need some extra guidance. You can reach out to Florida Labor Department.
Yeah. Yeah, because you're showing the Florida Building Code fee at three hundred and thirty seven thousand. Like that's the number. I'm looking at building code enforcement. That's right. So that's a four year average.
That, that, that's the unspent amount. I don't have the cap in.
Oh, you don't?
Much larger than that. You're not at the cap yet.
Okay.
So two different things, like you, you get to carry forward your surplus, the unspent or overspent. You just keep track of that, you know, if in five or six years, your building department, because it's going to be there even with no construction. If it's in current cost, yet no building permit fees, you kind of keep track of that. And then when growth starts, you can kind of apply that over. That's one, that's just keeping track of the actual, the cap is four year moving average. So it's two kind of different things. So you're under the cap for two thousand and twenty three.
And can you, can that, can those dollars be used for like a, a building official?
Yes.
Or a planning official, however.
Planning salary. Planning explicitly is disallowed in statutes. No planning, no zoning. You can't do fire inspections. You can allocate indirect costs, you know, because the building department doesn't have CFO. It doesn't have a payroll department. It doesn't have a finance department. So those costs in all of these ancillary departments, as long as there's a reasonable basis for the indirect allocation can be allocated to it. That's a lot of what we do with, with our clients is to help navigate that gray area and come up with a defensible allocation. So they can, you know, pour that money out and, and help lower that out because it does get big pretty quick.
Mm hmm. Okay.
Currently, the cost of the building is about, building official services is about four hundred thousand. So that'd be like one point six million. The town can technically bank per time when they get slow and to help fund that service. But the, the, we're looking at doing a fee study, a building permit fee study, because right now we're actually losing money each year versus what we pay the contractor to handle our building inspections. And so, yeah. So that's. It kind of shows itself in that really relatively small number. After years of growth, usually, you know, cities are struggling with how to spend this unspent. But you're still under the cap.
Right. So we're under the cap. So now it's like, okay, how do you recruit some of that to kind of, yeah, to build that up? That was. And that was the question about, you know, can you use that for a salary of a building official?
Yeah, you got it there. If you have a building permit tech that can, you know, be included in there and forcing the Florida Building Code, there is a lot of leeway, a lot of gray area there.
Of leeway, correct. Okay.
Thanks. As another one, as long as it's not enforcing local ordinances. You know, if you're talking about dangerous structures, maybe sometime code enforcement will kind of help with builder compliance sometimes in some cities I work with, you know, like cars that haven't moved or grass that hadn't been mowed doesn't count. But a lot of, usually, most people right around twenty five, thirty percent of code enforcement sign from these professional code enforcement officials that I talk to spent on and bills in code enforcement.
Well, I just, I, I think we're getting, we're gonna, we're gonna hit another boom here as far as building permits for single family houses with the impending development that's coming up. And I think we should jump on there now versus later and start hitting some of these impact fees and start looking at those quicker, quickly. So we can get that into the system, especially on the impact. Impact fees can be very helpful. Parks or as an impact fee, you could use that to improve parks. Yeah. So there's a lot that can.
Especially if the last one, you know, depending on the inflation assumption in the old study, you know, it may not even be relevant anymore.
Yeah.
Given what's happening.
Yeah. Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah. With that, I'd like to close. One thing I kind of sad coming here because I, I can no longer do the audit for the town. I, I've had to, I know the, I tried. That's why we, in my firm called Plan B. It wasn't the original plan. I've had some trouble getting qualified individuals to do the audit. And if I, I can't do it the way I want to do it. I just really didn't, don't want to do audits is, you know, or I, I just need to kind of back off until I can get staff back running again. And there's a lot of compliance on the auditors now, you know, as far as they're really running smaller auditors out of the business. Wanting auditors with, with more people. But I wouldn't say not rightfully so. They want a different layer of review and with the auditors, you know, they want someone within the audit firm to be independent, to review the work of the independent auditor, you know, so it's pretty sad. It's, I really enjoyed coming here and it, it's been a long time, but it just seemed like yesterday. You know, it doesn't seem like that long ago when I first came to the town. But I want to thank the commission and those who've been on it for a long time for your confidence in our firm. I really appreciate it. I really enjoyed working here.
Thank you.
And I'm not going away. That's, I'm, I'm still working. I'm not retired. So if you need anything other than audit, I will be glad.
Hey, Gabby's got your own speed dial, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you, Mike.
Really.
Yeah.
Clarifying first, making it simple, common sense, everything you brought to, to us. It's been very explanatory for us, very easy to understand. Thank you so much. We're going to miss you.
That's a great compliment. Appreciate it. Thank you.
And I think that's mirrored by all of us because sometimes, you know, guys study the numbers out and we shake our heads and go, yeah. And because even we go, what? And you are, it's just, it's been a pleasure having you do this for us for all these years, being here the entire time, one of the best to heck have you.
Yeah, yeah. I like, yeah, same. The feeling mutual, believe me. And thank you. So many changes. And I see it when I come in and the roundabout, you know, I remember when I was, when trails out there. You give us a couple of years here and you'll see a little more.
Yeah, no kidding. All right. Well, thank you all. And like I say, if you have any questions, my number's in the financial reports. Just give me a call.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, girl, we want to public forum. So this is something that may not be on the agenda tonight. So does anybody like to speak about anything that's happening in the town? Okay, how are you? Come on up.
Say your name and that's obviously for release.
My name's Meredith Ryan, two O five Riley Avenue. I'm going to read also my paper. But if you have any questions, feel free to interrupt. Good evening, members of the Oakland Commission and staff. My name is Meredith Ryan, two O five Riley Avenue, and I speak on behalf of my neighbors and myself. I stand before you today not just as a resident of Oakland, but as someone deeply concerned about the recent removal of trees off of Riley Avenue. These trees were not merely part of the landscape. They are living symbols of our community's commitment to sustainability, beauty and our shared future. Trees are more than just natural elements. They are essential for our environment and our well being. They purify our air, provide shade on scorching summer days, reduce noise pollution and contribute to the overall aesthetics of our neighborhoods. We even named the town after them. They're also habitats for countless species of birds and insects, enriching our local biodiversity, which we celebrate at the Oakland Nature Preserve. I'm no stranger to progress and development and we have, and have been following the Riley Farms project closely as my home sits adjacent. The removal of the tree on Riley Avenue, specifically on the corner of Riley and Walker, has understandably caused this tree to be hurt among many of us. While I acknowledge that there are times when true removal is necessary for safety reasons or for to, to make for necessary infrastructure improvements. It is crucial that we approach such decisions with utmost care and transparency. In this case, I urge the commission and the town staff to provide the community with clear rationale for why this specific tree had to be removed. Was there imminent safety hazard? Were there alternate solutions considered that could have preserved this tree? Transparency and decision making is vital to maintaining trust and ensuring that such actions align with the best interests of our community and environment. Here are a few questions that I sent to the mayor and I believe were already sent over to some of the team and staff of the town. The first question is, was the tree on Boss Family Holdings land, Riley Land Holdings land or the town of Oakland's land? The secondary question, if Riley Land Holdings, i.e. Riley Farms, has this lot been added to the project? It originally was omitted as it was occupied. That was my understanding. After Ms. Boss's passing, I anticipated it would be absorbed, but would require additional planning and zoning meetings. If so, has it been added? The third question, was a tree study done on this land project for Riley Farms and was this law included? And if so, can we have access to the study and the arborist reports? The final question, how can the town require and enforce this to happen for future development if it is not currently a requirement? Secondly, do penalties for developers removing trees need to increase to enforce the importance of preserving them? Furthermore, I encourage the commission and staff to adopt policies and practices that prioritize tree preservation and replanting. Let us commit to planting more trees than we remove, ensuring that future generations can benefit from the shade, beauty and environmental benefits that these trees provide. In conclusion, the removal of trees on Riley Avenue serves as a poignant reminder of the delicate balance between progress and environmental stewardship. Congressman John Lewis is known for not being afraid to make some noise and get in good trouble, necessary trouble. Thank you for your attention and consideration. Let's work together to get in some good trouble for current and future generations of Oakland residents.
You, Meredith. Thank you.
So I did, I did for your, your, your message made. It's a, it's a community. I did go out to the site today. I did ride through the entire project.
Today with Andy and, and Mike.
Partner.
And the project itself is not your normal's everyday residential project where what their developer is doing is just clearing the roads only. And then it's up to the individual builder who will then come in and I cleared the lot and can build the house. I agree with you. If they're looking at our tree ordinance, and I said this maybe a couple of meetings ago, maybe last meeting, about our tree ordinance and our tree structure is not up to par. It's, it's something that was created back in early two thousands, probably two thousand and three or four. So I passed Andy along with the town planner to look at upgrading that and putting more, I'll call it bite into it. Because right now there's really no bite into it. There's no, it's just a slap on the hand and don't do this again type thing.
Do we know what the current fee is for someone to take some, a tree similar to that out?
I did not see it in the ordinance today.
So it was in the bridge ordinance that got passed in two thousand and four, but the zoning code got revised, that part got left out. So we need to get that back in, but it was fifty dollars per inch.
Yeah, caliper inch. So that's the issue. And, and what we're doing is, you know, since, I, I mean, I've been, I've been the mayor for four months and I'm starting to dive in to things and finding these historical things that probably need to be updated. We know that our comp plan doesn't match our land development code plan. There's some, there's some missed, there's some missing pieces and parts or they overlap with one another. So those are things that will take time to fix. And then those are things, it's not, it's not bad. It's just, we need to get things back together is what we need to do. So we do want to be transparent with the residents and you, and you deserve that. I mean, we all deserve to be transparent. There is no nefarious stuff that happened. And, and if Andy and Mike want to speak more, the tree was not on the boss property. It was in, on a platted road that continues. So if you look at the Old Town Platte, the Old Town Platte had, was that Nixon? Continue.
Walker.
Walker, I'm sorry. Walker continuing on towards the lake. So where you see those houses will then be filled, that's actually platted, platted land that was platted back in the day.
Yeah, I understand that. I think my, the only point I would make in this, that is, I was flying best class.
Oh, sorry.
When I, when I refer my family, that this tree had been taken down. So today I drove through Oakland Park and also some, thank you, neighborhoods that have been able to preserve some trees. For example, we all dragged down Oakland Avenue to go to downtown Winter Garden. And there is a large thoroughfare with beautiful trees above it that they made a conscious effort. I would assume at some point, I'm, I'm not sure when that happened. But I, I think my question is just, how can we all work together to save what we love about this beautiful town that we all choose to live in? And it's not directed at anyone specifically. I, I just want it to stop if we can all help one another.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. And I think there are a lot of beautiful trees that are here that we try to preserve and save. Some of the trees are not so great health wise and they have to come out. You asked the question, was this a tree, is there a tree plant? Yes, there is a tree plant. So there's a certain size of specimen tree that has to be, that's removed. A lot of the trees out there are small scrub oak trees. So there's really not a lot to say that. But we could certainly share that plan with you. I, I looked at it. There are, that's all the trees that are coming out as of right now.
So then each individual lot from then on would be handled by the.
Yeah. So, so what I had recommended was that each, each individual in the commission, we haven't gotten that far yet. We're, we're kind of working the, the bugs out, but we need to move quickly as building permits come in. So what I had proposed was that is the individual lots owners come in and the same would go for the groves as well. Because there, there are huge oak trees that are in people's yards and stuff. As these people would come in to permit, the contractor or the owner would come and contract those. What you have on your lot is you have a buildable area per se. And that is, you're defined by your setbacks, your front, rear, side setbacks, and that's your lot that you can build. If you want to take a tree out anywhere outside of that area, then, you know, you need to give a reason why you want to remove that tree. I also propose that if there was a specimen sized tree in the middle of your buildable area, that it requires coming in front of the town commission to, to speak and say, this is why we need to move it.
Do we know if that tree was healthy?
I, I, I don't know if there was a, a, a arborist report on it. No.
Okay.
Yeah. So I hope I answered some of your questions.
Yeah, there were a few.
Okay.
Okay.
But we do, we are taking it, we, we do acknowledge that there, there, we do need to, we need, need to improve on our trees. And we need to do it sooner, prior than later, especially now.
Yeah.
What we have coming up right now and what we can preserve, you know, and, and that looks at, again, the, what's the cost per caliper inch that you're, that you're removing? You know, to the, to the developer. I mean, if you really want to take that tree out, I think it should cost you to take that tree out.
So what's the tree taking part of?
It was part of the development. It was on the town right of way. Yeah.
So.
No, the developer, that's part of the developer. Yeah, there was no cost to the residents. Yeah.
Man, I want to say something, Mayor. Thank you very much for bringing this up.
And I do believe that, you know, as much as we can increase the cost of the first inch should be the amount to go around the tree. So the cost that to build the road around that tree with asphalt or whatever, should be equivalent or then some. So the developer has to think twice before they do it, even though it wasn't a flat. I agree, we should have tried to work around it.
I mean, there's plenty of photos if anyone would like to see them. I went around Oakland Park today. Just because to me, that was the most obvious examples of where they either had an additional infrastructure cost to save a tree, um i.e. a park or um road remapping. I think um I think we did a disservice to our town by taking down that tree.
Yeah, uh would agree. And and our tour today, we were able to save a couple of the trees. Making them down. So we pointed those out to the developer.
Appreciate it.
Thanks. Uh anyone else like to speak?
Hi, going Marines.
I mean, Jacobson, four hundred and six street. It was not plenty on coming up here, but some trees. I was thinking it's getting to be that time of year where we're gonna have some possible hurricanes coming through. Um there's an awful lot of moss on the trees in the park. It looks beautiful, kind of like Jurassic Park. But um within the last year, I myself, my family had an arborist come out to our trees. And was talking about even the vines, how the over time they can weigh it down and they can literally like break the branches off. And I had to call you last week because that they they get weighted down. So um I remember talking years ago that we used to have people come and remove it.
You did.
And I think it's been a while and that stuff goes really fast. So uh if anybody else has been to the park lately, there's so much moss that is really, we're gonna have a big problem. I think that there's a big problem if no one was taught it.
Okay, I think we went, we ran out of people that were going to do it. Mike, may even wait before you came here even and there was a crew that came in here every year and they would go through the parks and stuff. And they're dark because they were taken, they used to you know, to make stuff with and they would come and strip all the trees of it, but that went away and reality is, we probably have them real harsh for someone else, but but you're right, it is, they will kill the tree. This is cool as that Spanish moss is, they will kill the tree.
So do we have a man or a janitor? Yeah, I I think it's probably about five years ago, it was prior to Hurricane Irma. We uh got everything that we could within a thirty five foot reach of that platform lift. So it's it's probably time again, yeah.
It might, you know, put out.
Very labor intensive. And it might, it was put out some mats or something, you know, of course, living where I live and watching them, you mean, they would climb these trees at the very top. I would like.
Yeah.
Man, he's let's sit out and watch these guys fall out of the street. I mean, that's how how bad it looked. But I mean, they would strip these trees. They did just a heck of a job, you know.
Safely with that thirty five foot cherry picker and getting volunteers. And there's a lot of people in the town who always approach me saying, can I volunteer in a project? And you know, a volunteer program or people that can show up, pick a date, because there's a lot of legwork, labor intensive, once you throw it on the floor, pack it up.
Plus it'll look nicer too. When you when you thin it out, it'll look, the trees can grow prettier and it'll look.
They leaf out on you as well.
And there's already some branches starting to come down like out of the blue. So thanks for letting me bring that up.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Hi, very very good.
Yeah, I'm really tired of the tree stuff, but I have a question. So um Eric Bossard, one five seven three four East Oakland Avenue. I'm the one that stirred up a whole lot of Facebook recently when I was out of town and my husband sent me a picture of a tree, too, actually. That were directly behind our house in the grove that was supposed to have been cut. So knowing the information, I know what goes on behind the scenes before land is developed. I was like, listen, though, this was already plotted, this was already set with the um the development, that all the engineering was done. And yet these two large trees that were barked to be kept safe now are being torn down. They were massive. They weren't scrub trees, they were massive. So I took a picture of it, posted on Facebook and of course, you know, started a whole wildfire. Um but my my, it wasn't to start anything. My point was to get across is that why was this developer allowed to come in after the fact without maybe having a discussion or it being approved? To say, okay, this is why we need to take the tree down, to the tune of what Meredith spoke before. Was that shouldn't it come before the commission or to a meeting versus just let me go ahead and take it down? And then slap me on the hand later because you know, he's got deep pockets and he can afford to pay just to pay off and say, yeah, I'm sorry, I took the tree down. I'll just pay the money. You can't replace the streets, you know, I I understand smaller trees and I understand planting a bunch of trees around down. These are different kind of trees. These are not the kind of trees that you just see um on the side of the road. They're the massive ones that Meredith was talking about. So these two trees were brought down, still don't understand why. I I get the whole development side. The developer decided, someone gave him my personal cell phone number. He calls me, I'm out of town and wants to discuss with me why I posted the post I did. I never mentioned his name. I've never met him in my life. I just wanted some understanding and transparency as to why this was allowed to happen and we didn't know about it. And so I explained to him, I said, well, I'm out of town and I don't appreciate the phone call. I'll meet you with the town commission and come and we'll talk about it. But that character of that individual shows me right there that he doesn't care. He was okay taking that tree down. He was more angry that I made a post on Facebook, didn't call him out, didn't say anything. I just asked what's going on? Why is the developer allowed to do this? I think that that's a lot of this individual who's not here tonight, which that's fine, but I mean, why should he be allowed just to come in and do whatever he wants without it being approved first or let's bring it? And then so my husband said, yeah, we took a trip around. I forgot who it was. It might have been you, Mike, that went with Steve and drove around town and talked about, you know, and I I get all that, you know, that I understand that, but at this level, they're just mowing them down because, oh yeah, it's in our way now. We decided we've switched, you know, how we're gonna put the houses and the roads and whatever. It was already engineered. Those were already saved. Why was it removed?
Yeah, so um I will say that it was your post that started me on this tree. Uh uh search here on 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 looking at our ordinances and stuff. Uh when we saw that and then Andy uh got involved. So we did talk about that a couple of a a couple of meetings ago or a meeting ago about why uh that developer in that tree was actually slated to be removed in that area and it was because of the um uh drainage swell that ran behind your house and behind those houses to convey all the stormwater from flooding everybody out. And and I know that he had it marked out and he had it fenced off like it was gonna be a safe tree. But unfortunately, that was not the case and that was to come out. That was and that is on the plan, I believe, that Mike can share. See if you want, but yeah, that's that was, that's what happened. So thanks to your attention, that brought us to look at all this stuff to start reevaluating what are we doing there? So, yeah.
It's just when you're sitting there watching it and you see the with fences and then the next day it's gone. You're like, okay, wait, what's going on? And I understand the drainage issue, but I mean, there was multiple, multiple trees back there and I just, you know, knowing that the engineering was already done, knowing that everything had already been plotted out, why all of a sudden we're just gonna take the tree down?
We asked the same question as to the developer to say, why didn't your, I mean, it was a question that we had a call with the developer along with uh our planning, Brad planning as well as Andy himself. To ask the question, you're creating really bad problems here.
Right.
But we did address that with with the development.
Okay. I would like to think that I'm just gonna say this because I feel like when an individual says the actions he did through their reach of residence, we've never met in his entire life. I've never even met him personally and called me on the phone and wanted to discuss this over a phone call when I'm clearly out of state. I feel like, okay, then what kind of person are we allowing to build and develop in our community? Because I don't feel like that he's a team player and that this town needs to be like we've always been, that's a team player and that, you know, we're connected and we all work with each other instead of him just walking into a.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else tonight? Oh, hi, Chris, how are you?
Good evening. Um I actually just wanted to echo the mayor's.
Got to get your address.
Oh, Chris Keller, I thought. It's been a while, I know. Chris Keller, twenty five eleven Stone Creek Court. Um I wanted to echo some comments the mayor made earlier and I actually had mentioned a few months ago during one of the uh presentations and implore the committee to really prioritize these building permit and impact fees. We are at the cost of a lot of buildings, homes and and buildings, commercial development. And I think if we saw anything in some of our numbers in the audit, that it is imperative that we get these things where they need to be so that um we're not paying for infrastructure and such at the cost of the existing funds that we have for the town. So I just wanted to reiterate, I think that's a really important thing and I I agree, I think the trees are very important too. And that needs to be looked at, but we have got to get these fees in line with where they really need to be.
Agree. Hundred percent. Thanks.
My name is Joe Cox. I'm Sheryl Lynn, North Walker Street. I'm talking about the fireworks. Um I talked to the chief and he said there is a statute in Florida. Um I love the Fourth of July, but I didn't like it three in the morning when the M eighties or whatever they were going off shaking my windows. Um and when they start before, the two days before the Fourth of July and then the fifth and and what he said was all we have to do is call the non-emergent number and complain and they'll enforce it. And if you have dogs, you know what it's like when your dog is under the bed because somebody set a fireworks off at three in the morning. So that's just, I'm gonna say, you know, call it in and we can get people to do it on the Fourth of July, finish at ten and do it on New Year's Eve and finish by you know, one in the morning the next day. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Anyone else? Okay, all right. So let's the uh public forum. And uh moving on to the consent agenda and we have four items on the consent agenda. The metro of Orlando funding agreement for uh years twenty twenty four, five, and then Candy's uh manager's report. Any questions, comments, or anything anybody want to discuss? No, to entertain a motion.
Motion except except the consent agenda as presented.
Thanks. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, okay. All right, uh moving on to other policy matters, which is our MOU or memorandum of understanding between Orange County Sheriff and the police department.
Can you make him up there, please?
Hey. Shade them. So all this is is uh a new memorandum of understanding between the sheriff's office and Oakland Police Department. There's one issued roughly every four years with the terms of the sheriff. The sheriff was uh just reelected unopposed, so he's gotta do this for his next term, but there was one major change that came out of the Sixth Judicial Circuit in Florida, which basically without boring you, when officers anywhere in Orange County make an arrest for DUI, they have to go to the DUI testing center, which is in unincorporated Orange County. An attorney challenged the legality of a police officer from Oakland or anywhere else in Orange County's jurisdiction obtaining evidence. Uh um there's a twenty minute observation period that you have to watch the people that you arrested before they test. That twenty minute observation period has been deemed to be evidence. And we're we're obtaining evidence in a jurisdiction we don't have the right to be in. Uh that that case was ruled in the Sixth Circuit. And now as a result, all counties in Florida had to change their MOUs. So the only change that comes before you in this MOU is regarding the uh DUI testing center, the the obtaining of evidence in another jurisdiction. So this this up until now, since that ruling, anytime we've gone there, we've had to call and obtain mutual aid permission, fill out forms and all that. This new MOU grants blanket mutual aid to any agency that goes there. Everything else is exactly the same. It allows for uh interagency cooperation between unincorporated Orange County and all the municipalities within. Each agency has it on. Um so it it was just up to be signed. It has to be approved at commission and it has to be signed by the mayor. Um and our legal representative, which we forward that to uh Bo's law firm. And I just wanted to present and let you know that that is the only change.
So you pull somebody over or do you uh?
You have to, you do your field sobriety test.
Correct.
Field sobriety exercise, not a test, yes. Enter sign.
I'm gonna catch me, sir.
Uh no.
Did you throw him back to your control car and spend thirty minutes to try to get to what thirty third or what do you?
No, the DUI testing center is in Orange County uh right at OBT and Grant.
Okay.
Right around, or I'm sorry, OBT and Grand. Um and it's a small facility only for the purpose of, they have the uh intoxicizers, things like that, there's a couple of holding cells. And the officers have to go there prior to going to thirty third. They have to go there, offer the um breath test, which everybody by signing their driver's license agrees to do. They offer that, but before you offer that test, there has to be a twenty minute observation period to prove, you have to let the alcohol uh to prove that the person didn't just take a drink. Uh because if you just take a drink and blow into the intoxicator, it's gonna give an inaccurate result. So you have to observe them for at least twenty minutes to say that the breath test is what was in their system at the time.
I got it.
Uh and that that facility is only, it's a quick, you can only spend a maximum of, I think it's two hours in that building. Um and that's going through your paperwork, you know, if there's a line or whatever. But then after that, they put you out and you have to go to the jail and process the rest of the paperwork. But either way, you're in two Orange County facilities, an unincorporated Orange County, obtaining evidence in the eyes of the court. And uh now just to make it challenge free.
Yeah.
Sheriff's have issued an associate.
It's all part of the uh the arrest process.
Cool. So I want you to give them their exercise. And scroll down to the center to make sure there's twenty minutes seriously that you 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 can't give you before twenty minutes is that what you're saying?
So the uh from the time of the stop to, that just doesn't count as the observation period. When you enter DUI testing facility, they log you in, that begins your twenty. Just to show that, you know, it's not like they took a drink of of straight alcohol right before you stopped them. Of course, they're gonna smell a lot worse, but they may not be at point oh eight or above. But it's just for the accuracy and the intoxicator results aren't admissible in court. And it's interesting.
I think we want a motion, motion to approve this.
Okay, so I might make a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve this uh MOU. We don't want to show it off with the local PD.
Excellent.
I'm second. If I recall, favor.
Thanks.
And it would be effective until December thirty first, twenty twenty eight. It's it's outlined on it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. All right, guys, moving on to the town manager. Oh, Andy.
This man, the commission. Uh this one's uh update is uh town staff has reached out to the Department of Transportation to uh see about getting the medians maintained on state room fifty. To think of, you noticed those, they're a little over room. Uh they said it'll be out here before July seventeenth to take care of those. And then we found out they contractor maintains those once a month. Um so we'll keep an eye on that as the summer goes, but uh just an update to to the and commission on that.
Um outside of that, we're continuing to work on the tree ordinance. We're gonna hopefully at the next meeting have a process in place that will kind of clean up some things. Um we we uh we all two here uh want to make sure that we have all the policies and procedures procedures in place uh in order to save as many trees as as possible throughout the process. When you have several engineers involved and town commission and sometimes um you need to go back and check your procedures to make sure those are what kind of dictate what takes place out of the deal. So we're looking at definitely tighten those up a little bit for any future developments. Um and we're working on that as quick as we can. Uh we're also taking a look at some of the the dirt road issues and the the road issues. We've kind of had, we've had a meeting uh this morning um to talk about possibly putting down some different types of materials to test some other areas and hopefully we can uh continue and start to address uh some of the some of the dust issues and move on that as well. Um so with that being said, um budget work session, I felt went good uh at our last meeting. If any of the residents have any issues or questions uh with tree plans or anything like that, just please reach out to me. I'd be more than willing to sit down with you, show you anything that we have uh as well as the budget as we go into the budget process. Um give me a call or shoot me an email. Um it's right on the website. If you have any issues in town, you know, just uh give me a call and and I'll be more than happy to try to follow up with you. Um if I'm able, so uh that being said, that's all I have this evening.
Yes.
Mr. C in this house. Boy, yeah, uh we. Come say hi. And then we also will have a ninja horse to drop painting out there for children's, young little kids. We lots of fun things to do. Um I dropped off some flyers over there. Our exhibit will slip in August and we're having an opening event August sixteenth. Um it's about Lake Apaca, the fine line, um um the history and showcasing local artists. Um photographs. Um it's about Lake Apaca.
Thanks. Mike, you got anything good?
Uh the only thing I have is we're we're in the process of doing some hurricane prep, you know, just getting ready for what we hope won't happen, but uh it sounds like it's gonna be a busy year. Um that's really all I had.
Chief, you got anything good?
Uh so I see uh Thursday, Wednesday, the nice, the nice residents on billion.
That's really all I had.
Chief, you got anything good?
Uh, so I see, uh, police work is on Wednesday, the nice, the nice residents on. And so I can spell it wrong, it's ooh.
I think it's been fixed.
But yes, it was, it was within moments.
Yes.
Uh, but it was it was great and I really appreciate that some other residents in the town got on our social media and said, hey, come to this street, next time, come to this neighborhood. So it shows us that we're getting some engagement, attention. That is, uh, really good.
Do you have your street picked out yet?
No.
Okay. Gabby? Nothing for you?
I don't feel like we don't.
Does not need to be, bring that breathalyzer back.
Yeah. Like heat max inside.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, all right. Elise, you got anything good?
My apologies to everybody online. We did not have audio for the first twenty five, thirty minutes. So just, I apologize, um, the the problems with tech, you know? But we are up and running now, so thank you for the end of the audit.
You're meeting somebody to want to look at that. So hopefully tomorrow we'll have a somewhat solution we can present to everybody to 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 look at improving what we have and stuff. So, yeah. Okay. Um, that's it for staff. Got anything good today?
Yeah, I wanted to bring up that, uh, Fourth of July, uh, I went to the Winter Garden Parade, participated there, represents our town. Brought up our neighbor, uh, say, open the town, it's, you know, our neighbor and is always participating. And it was really, really good, it's all a nice, good year after year. And I came back into our town in Costa Everian, our golf cart, you know, looking at how so many block parties and and people celebrate Fourth of July here in Oakland, which got me really happy to see that. But I started thinking that maybe one of these days we should celebrate Fourth of July here in Oakland in some shape, form or parade fashion. And to bring up Joe Cox's comments, you know, it would be great because during that moment, we can, everybody wants to celebrate, a lot of pride in our town. And we can reiterate to them and say, hey, could you guys keep it till ten o'clock or whatnot? But I think we're long overdue. If it's not now, one of these years, it would be nice to have even a small version of that parade. I think when I was walking on that parade on on Plant Street, there were so many people from Oakland and they were saying, you know, hey, there's Oakland and then there was residents there uh, in the in the crowd. So I think that crowd will stay here and we do something small here if it could be possible. Yeah, run that out then.
A little parade, All American Kids Parade, very good, yeah. Great.
Uh, just a little quick update on our Dark Sky Initiative. Kind of been at a standstill for several months since Jessica with Public Works, you know, left the town of Oakland and she did a really good job getting it started. But since she left, nothing's really happened. And I've been talking to Andy about it and uh, I approached Amona Phipps and asked her if she was willing to help out and she is more than happy. She's gonna take off where Jessica stopped and so I'm hoping the next few months, we're gonna start seeing some real progress in our Dark Sky Initiative.
Great. Thank you. Anything else?
Nothing to report. Um, the Tri-County League is, I have a meeting this week to prepare for the next year. So hopefully we can get more activity from the board to attend. So I have something to share next two weeks. We just wanna just let that see, because we get a lot of emails from the Tri-County Police and we are, we're trying to get more of the the cities in town here to participate. So they have site activities, some different days of the week, but just looking forward to the Tri-County League, maybe preparing and also, uh, you know, discussing issues that that affect this entire, so as that develops, I'm sure.
Hi, um, next week, I will be here in North Carolina. Won't be able to zoom because I'm in that part of North Carolina that has no internet. Which is most of that state. But before we come back again, at the school on the seventh, having that cookout for the future and staff, so if you guys wanna wanna come, I will be the next one behind everyone, but we'll put it on reminders again. Got a new note on the set.
Great. So last week, uh, Andy and I met with, uh, Carolina Amnesty who stopped by the town just to kind of, uh, meet with us and to discuss with her, uh, the town's disappointment and getting the six hundred fifty thousand dollar cut from the budget. And for the sewer, for the septic, the sewer program that we petitioned for. If you recall, there's a lot of, he said there was a lot of public infrastructure improvements that were cut from the state budget this year. But there is, uh, FDEP has about five hundred million dollars available. And, uh, that was the government's, our suggestion was uh, and start petitioning those. So we've asked, um, the representative's office to help us reach out to senior level staff at FDEP to talk to them about our program here and find ways to facilitate those funds to come to the town. You know, you think a town like this, it's not a lot of infrastructure in the grand scheme of things that has to go in. But with our proximity to the lake and trying to clean up a lake, you'd think you'd try to, you know, put some people right off the line there. Also, Andy's, I know he's been working on the CRA, uh, with, uh, we had a call with Orange County last week. And, uh, we're going to send out an RFP to help, uh, find people that can engage, uh, our needs assessment, because we have to do a needs assessment in town in order to try to get back some of the Orange County taxes that we pay in right now. So, uh, we're gonna start that, we started that process. So Andy's writing that up. Uh, you know, there's those tax dollars that you would, that you would normally pay Orange County, come back to the town, we use those. That could be used for things such as, you know, maybe the the canal refurbishment, trying to get that cleaned up, that that's around there uh, and other other things. So, um, that's in the works, just let you guys know that's still going. And then the last thing I have was, I know that our last meeting, we talked about the budget as well. So I just encourage everybody, if you have questions or anything on the budgets, let's, uh, make sure we we discuss those. I I may have a couple of items I wanna throw on an agenda at a upcoming meeting um, to to talk a little more about. Um, I don't believe we need a work session unless everybody thinks we need a work session. But Andy's around, so I I would encourage everybody to get with Andy uh, on your on your comments. And I think our first public hearing on the, uh, budget for next, for this, uh, coming year is, uh, September. It's been that is, so, yeah, that's it for me. Nobody else?
All right. All hearts and minds are satisfied as a jury, it's eight twenty four.